David, y creo que todos los que han venido en contacto con él, con los asuntos del Consejo de la ciudad, ha tenido que hacer un giro rápido en muchas cosas diferentes y se trata de manejar muy bien con las personas. En las reuniones de MMA me ha sorprendido cómo sus colegas hablan mucho de él. Buscan su ayuda en diferentes cosas. Gracias por los años que nos has dado.
Bueno, en este momento el presidente del Consejo de la ciudad David Phil quiere dar un informe de estado de la ciudad.
Voy a hacer esto corto y sencillo, no estoy seguro si 90 es mejor que 40, pero estoy harto. Solo quería decirle rápidamente gracias a todos nuestros empleados de la ciudad, las inspecciones, la policía, la policía de la salud, todos los empleados de la ciudad que han sido flexibles y trabajando más horas que puedes imaginarte para volver a abrir nuestras empresas cuando sea posible y mantenerlas abiertas mientras están cambiando las condiciones que están sucediendo. También quiero decirles gracias a todos los asuntos y comités que hacen que esta ciudad funcione porque la mayoría de ellos no reciben un centavo de salario. Este año obviamente ha sido un año diferente a cualquier otro y hemos hecho que funcione y la ciudad está en gran forma debido a eso. Así que eso es todo lo que tengo que decir, gracias.
Bien, voy a pasar las reglas de decoro para la reunión. La reunión se llevará a cabo según las reglas de la reunión de la ciudad. Si quieres hablar con un artículo, por favor, acéspese a su位 y espere que sea reconocido por el moderador. Alguien te vendrá con un micrófono que será sanitizado después de cada uso. State su nombre y dirección residencial cada vez que se reconozca para hablar. Mantiene todos los comentarios relativos al artículo o motion en mano. No desprecie a ninguna persona, por favor. No se refiere a ningún anterior orador por nombre, por favor, use al anterior orador en lugar de él. Puede hablar tantas veces como se sienta necesario, pero por favor dé a los demás una oportunidad de hablar antes de volver al micrófono. Si es necesario, le pediré que espere hasta que los demás tengan la oportunidad de hablar. Directe tus comentarios al moderador, por favor, límite tus comentarios a tres minutos o menos. Todos los amendamientos deben ser presentados en la writing a la moderatora tan pronto como se ofrece el amendment y por favor apague todos tus dispositivos electrónicos. Bien, vamos a empezar la reunión con la agenda de consentimiento. Todos deberían tener eso. Voy a explicar qué es la agenda de consentimiento y luego lo pasaremos a través de él. Artículos warrantados sobre la agenda de consentimiento son excepciones al proceso general de la reunión de la ciudad. El moderador del Consejo de la ciudad y el Comité de Finanzas identifican para la consideración de la reunión de la ciudad esos artículos que creen que deberían generar no controversia y que pueden ser correctamente votados sin debate. Estos artículos se ponen en la agenda de consentimiento para permitir que las motiones bajo estos artículos sean actuadas como unidad y sean通过 without debate. En la llamada de la agenda de consentimiento, el moderador leerá los números de los artículos uno a uno. Si alguno de los votantes se objeta a cualquier artículo particular incluido en la agenda de consentimiento, dirán "Detenga" con un fuerte voz cuando el número sea llamado. El artículo será removido automáticamente de la agenda de consentimiento y restaurado a su lugar original en el warrant, que se debatirá de forma habitual. Después de la llamada de los individuos en la agenda de consentimiento, el moderador hará la demanda y los votantes pasarán todos los individuos como unidad en una sola llamada. Usar la agenda de consentimiento hace que la reunión de la ciudad sea más eficiente al acelerar el manejo de los individuos no controversios. La agenda de consentimiento también incluye motiones procedurales que permiten a los departamentos dirigir la reunión de la ciudad de tiempo a tiempo para información. Así que la motion de la agenda de consentimiento es: "Mueve que los artículos 1, 3, 4 y 5 sean fuera de orden y que sean通过en acuerdo con la motion mostrada en la agenda de consentimiento distribuida esta mañana y permita a todos los oficiales, los departamentos y agentes de la ciudad dirigir la reunión de la ciudad en cuestiones que puedan ser informativas." ¿Tengo una motion? ¿Segunda? Tengo una motion y una segunda. Permítanme que el Sr. Nixon explique estas cosas porque inevitablemente alguien quiere saber de qué se trata.
Gracias, Sr. Moderator, y gracias a todos por esos comentarios gentes. Ha sido un honor y un privilegio venir a trabajar todos los días para la ciudad de Hadley. Tienes una gran comunidad y estoy orgulloso de haber ayudado a avanzar de alguna manera que pueda. Artículo 1, presupuestos de año pasado. Recibimos tres presupuestos después de cerrar los presupuestos FY20. Dos para químicos en la planta de tratamiento de agua y residuos y uno para mantenimiento de un cementerio. Así que necesitamos un voto para pagar estos vendedores. Article 3 es un artículo de recogida. Esto es algo que hemos puesto en cada one de los warrant de la ciudad. Son los puestos de dinero no productivos devueltos a su fuente original. Un total de 14,568 dólares y 7 cents en efectivo devuelto a los puestos de dinero capital de estabilización y CPA. Y luego el adquisición que no necesitamos, 24,050 dólares en total que no necesitamos y que se puede retirar del registro. Un fondo revolucionario para el inspector de edificios para su software de permisos online, permitiéndoles gastar hasta 10,000 dólares al año para pagar las tarifas de software asociadas con ese proyecto. Y finalmente, un transfer de efectivo de 14,1410 dólares de vuelta al CPA para mantenimiento que no era CPA eligible pero fue cobrado al CPA. Así que solo estamos haciendo que ese proyecto esté activo todavía. ¿Alguna pregunta?
¿Alguna pregunta de alguien sobre eso? No hay ninguna. Todos los que están a favor, señale mi retoque, por favor. Gracias. ¿Alguien oposito? Motion aprobada de manera unanada. Pasando a Article 2. "Mueve que la ciudad modifique el presupuesto general de año fiscal 2021 en Article 8 de la warrant de reunión de la ciudad anual, llevada a cabo en junio de 2020, como sigue: aumentar y transferir de fondos disponibles las estimadas cantidades en Article 2, Table A, presentado en la reunión especial de septiembre de 2020 e incorporada por referencia aquí, lo que significa que está en tu warrant que tienes. Y el Consejo de la ciudad recomienda esto, 500. El Comité de Finanzas recomienda esto, 500. ¿Tengo una motion? ¿Segunda? Bueno, tengo una motion y una segunda. Vamos a explicar eso. Bueno, Sr. Nixon, creo que esta es tuya.
Estamos haciendo ajustes al presupuesto que se pasó en la reunión anual de la ciudad en junio 2020. Lo primero es que el presupuesto está equilibrado, así que los ajustes que estamos haciendo tienen que ver con el impacto sobre los impuestos que esperas pagar durante el resto del año así como para abordar un par de cuestiones que surgieron cuando empezamos a hacer que los nuevos edificios operen. Estamos aumentando el Consejo de la ciudad por 2500 dólares para usos de IT. La subestación de la estación de policía del norte de Hadley aumenta 7500 dólares para utilidades. El centro de servicio superior aumenta 3200 dólares para utilidades. Y la biblioteca aumenta por 1600 dólares para utilidades, principalmente propane. Y luego 1990 dólares para Internet que no está asociado con el sistema CW Mars. El deuda se reduce por 176,101 dólares por difundir el principal en el porcentaje de impuestos por un año con el objetivo de reducir la carga de impuestos para los negocios y el hogar de familia promedio. La estabilización a 530,000 dólares se usa para mantener el impacto de los impuestos para el hogar de familia promedio, incluso con los impuestos de año pasado. Estamos en tiempos difíciles financieramente para muchas personas y todo lo que podemos hacer para mitigar el impacto sobre la cantidad de dinero que escribas en tu cheque de impuestos, eso es lo que estamos tratando de lograr aquí. No hay promesa de año siguiente. Deberías probablemente ver esto como un contrato de un año hacia mantener el impacto de los impuestos lo más posible, pero también vamos a tratar de mantener el impacto de los impuestos del año siguiente lo más posible, así como sin promesas en este momento.
Gracias, Sr. Nixon. ¿Alguien tiene alguna pregunta? Espera, Molly, alguien te vendrá con un micrófono. Si tienes una pregunta y estás afuera y no puedes verme, yo no puedo ver a usted, así que se mueva de una manera u otra para que pueda verte, si es el caso, por favor.
¿Puedo escucharlo? Bien, en realidad quiero añadir...
Perdón, perdón, nombre y dirección.
Molly King, 16 Hadley Place. Quiero ofrecer un amendment amigable al artículo propuesto y solo quería ofrecer ese número, la tabla, Table A, cambiada. Y esa es la cantidad que se propone para venir de la cuenta de estabilización y tener que volver a la propuesta original y arreglarla a 375,000. Así que es una reducción de 155,000 de la estabilización y me gustaría explicar por qué. ¿Habla más alto? Bien, bien. Mi razonamiento detrás de eso es, primero, yo condeno al Consejo de la ciudad y al Comité de Finanzas por lidiar con una situación financiera increíblemente difícil este año. Hay muchos partidos que se están moviendo y creo que la idea de tomar los 375 de la estabilización porque las escuelas van a estar devueltas de nuevo hace un tiempo tiene un awful lot de sensaciones, increíblemente útil para los contribuyentes y estoy de acuerdo con que hay muchas personas que están así. Cuando tomo excepción a la idea de tomar otro 155 encima del impuesto, bajo la propuesta de 375, el porcentaje iba bajando de 12 dólares y 78 cents a 12 dólares y 15 cents. El 155 adicional aumentó el porcentaje del impuesto de 12 dólares y 15 cents a 12 dólares cada año. Creo que es una intención, pero no creo que hubo discusión en el Consejo de la ciudad y el Comité de Finanzas sobre esto, porque yo creo que fue totalmente falso. La razonabilidad es que los contribuyentes más afectados pueden estar luchando debido a las variaciones en las campañas que están subiendo que esto podría mantener los impuestos flat. La realidad, y esto se basa en conversaciones con los oficiales de la Asesora y Collección es que legalmente, un 1,000 residentes probablemente los impuestos bajaran y el ahorro promedio de contribuyentes va a ser de una especie de 30 o 50 dólares por año. Así que las personas que están cerca de esto, las personas que hicieron construcciones aleatorias que hicieron un montón de remodelaje, como Wish es uno que tengo, pero no realmente los contribuyentes. Y no quiero decir 30 o 50 dólares, eso es importante, pero si lo ahorras y lo cajas un año, puedes tener un dólar al año. Y si tienes tu dinero en escaso y te lo devuelves a la banca, la base probablemente no haya sido la misma. Así que mi creencia sería que en 155 de la estabilización, podrías tener forma de vida para la ciudad porque la ciudad va a estar en una situación muy difícil el año próximo. Todos los ingresos van a venir de otra persona y el ciclo de presupuesto va a ser difícil. Si yo fuera un departamento de trabajo ahora mismo, estaría realmente complicado tener una moción cuando llegues a la estabilización. Como todos los ciudadanos saben, eso es nuestra única backstop y nada de eso puede pasar. Así que ahora que lo veamos, si el año próximo se puede utilizar potencialmente para salvar los fondos para mantener servicios, las empresas tienen que hacerlo porque nuestros ingresos no están ahí.
¿Podría hablar de nuevo?
Así que, solo para terminar, no creo que haya urgencia ahora. Según la Collección, los impuestos están muy cerca de la cuestión del 100%. Y los 155,000 dólares de la estabilización es uno.
Bueno, gracias. Tengo una motion para modificar el artículo 2. ¿Alguien quiere una segunda? Bueno, tengo una motion y una segunda. Ahora podemos discutir la motion modificada. Molly, ¿puedo tener eso, por favor, aunque sé que tengo algo que probablemente es exactamente lo mismo? Esto fue un amendment anticipado, así que creo que tengo la motion modificada. ¿Alguien quiere hablar con la motion modificada?
Así que en la reunión de la ciudad, se nos iba a pedir que redujéramos el porcentaje de interés en la pasiva.
...y el impuesto a los comidas, que representa 1.3 millones de ingresos. Y quiero escuchar la respuesta. ¿Me apoyan en la modificación?
Sí, veré si puedo encontrar a alguien para responder eso para usted. ¿Alguien tiene conocimiento? Sr. Nixon.
La primera parte de esa pregunta es la probabilidad de una proposición de dos y medio sobrevivir. Si esa es una decisión, una decisión política que el Consejo de la ciudad haría y estaría apoyada por los votantes. Así que esa es una decisión política, no tengo la respuesta a eso. Con respecto al impuesto a las comidas y al alquiler de habitación, tenemos números de ingresos hasta octubre, así que tenemos el tercer cuarto del año fiscal. El año pasado proyectamos que perderíamos aproximadamente el 50% de nuestro ingreso de ocupación de hotel y aproximadamente el 75%, o mejor, aproximadamente el 35% del impuesto a las comidas. Basado en esas expectativas reducidas, los números de octubre muestran que estamos bastante en línea. Así que esas predicciones en este momento parecen ser precisas. Si esa situación va a mejorar en el futuro, el tiempo lo dirá.
Gracias. Señor.
Sí, Steve Mumlow, 1 West Street. Me gustaría condenar al consejo de la ciudad y al Comité de Finanzas por la grave condición financiera que estamos en, en la ciudad de Hadley. Pero apoyo la modificación de la propuesta. No sabemos cómo va a ser el año próximo y si se pone peor, las personas estarán en más malas condiciones, menos ocupación, menos negocio de restaurantes y aún así hemos gastado nuestro cinturón. Creo que esa no es una forma adecuada de manejar la situación, aunque se ha manejado bien hoy. Si las cosas se vuelven mejores, será el momento exacto cuando volvamos a todos los ciudadanos de Hadley y les pidiamos que invirtan más dinero en el piso. Más gente podría ser retirada.
Si se acercan los microfonos, no creo que puedan escuchar.
Sí, y si mantenemos nuestro cinturón derramado, si las cosas se vuelven peores, entonces nos veremos a nosotros mismos. Si comenzamos a gastar nuestros fondos excesivos y las cosas se vuelven peores, la única forma en que podemos continuar con lo que tenemos es pedirle a las personas que inviertan dinero donde probablemente sean menos capaces de invirtir dinero que son hoy.
Gracias. Sr. Washkevitz.
Hemos trabajado bastante duro con estos presupuestos y el problema es que el estado está arrojando su reír de la tarde también. Y su financiación está en 5% más alto del presupuesto que tienen ahora. Lo que estamos haciendo es tratar de financiar lo que tenemos ahora sin reducir posiciones, departamentos y servicios a los ciudadanos. Hay demasiadas personas aquí con ingresos fijos que no pueden pagar lo que están pagando ahora. Otros folk están pagando sus impuestos por ellos. Esto solo, tiene que pararse en algún lugar. Si se pone peor, solo va a ponerse peor para todos, no solo para nosotros en la ciudad ahora.
Gracias. Sr. Parmar.
Chardoul Parmar, 72 Moore Road, Hadley. Mi familia posee algunos de los hoteles que ganan el impuesto a las comidas y al alquiler de habitación para la ciudad. Hemos estado aquí durante 32 años y hemos construido muchas de las infraestructuras de hotel y hospitalidad para esta ciudad y voy a decir que ha sido un desastre para mi familia. Esta crisis ha disminuido nuestra familia hasta el punto en que nos hemos retirado y yo no he recogido un salario por más de seis meses. Yo he hecho, y mi familia ha hecho sacrificios significativos solo para que podamos sostener nuestra personal y nuestra gente. He tenido que retirar a personas que han trabajado para mí durante 30 años desde que era un niño y sé que no estoy solo en esto. Hay otras personas que tienen problemas de cuidado de niños, no porque no envíen a sus hijos a la escuela, sino porque su persona de cuidado de niños es una persona mayor que no pueden arriesgarse a enfermar. Así que eso, lo que eso en cambio hace es tomar una familia que gana ingresos con dos personas y los lleva a una. Y para nosotros decir que podemos pagar 50 dólares, tal vez todo el mundo vaya a Starbucks, pero yo no. Y yo voy y trato de ahorrar dinero y mantener mis recursos y mi negocio de familia sostenible. Y trato de hacer todo lo que puedo para ahorrar mi negocio. Así que esta modificación carece de empatía para las personas que en realidad están sufriendo por esto porque yo estoy lidiando con esto todos los días. Soy el uno y mi familia son las que están recibiendo ataques de pánico todos los días tratando de lidiar con las presiones que tenemos. Y así que yo enfaticamente digo no a esta modificación. Gracias.
Gracias. Sr. Ditkevitz.
Gracias, Sr. Moderator. Dan Ditkevitz, 130 Hackney Road. Estoy completamente de acuerdo con el anterior orador. Tenemos la oportunidad de tener, con sus palabras, empatía para todos los menos afortunados en esta ciudad. Tenemos un presupuesto financiado a nivel global, según el señor Washkevitz. Así que no apoyo esta modificación. Gracias.
Gracias. Sr. Moriarty.
George Moriarty, 22 Moore Road. Estoy de acuerdo, básicamente tenemos un presupuesto financiado a nivel global y algunas personas, parece que tienen miedo de devolver dinero a los contribuyentes de Hadley. Miré el presupuesto, Article 7, hay un par de cientos de mil dólares de cosas. Alguno es medios, otro es cosas que la ciudad necesita, pero no vi que se recorten muchas cosas. Todo el mundo aquí probablemente no haya ido a comprar un vehículo nuevo este año, pero estamos comprando dos o tres y lawnmowers y todo. Así que creo que parte de este dinero necesita volver a los contribuyentes de Hadley y no seguir buscando cosas. Simplemente no parece que las personas en esta ciudad hayan recortado el presupuesto y ahora hay un artículo que va a financiarlo a nivel global y tenemos problemas con él. Así que estoy de acuerdo con el artículo original y creo que esta modificación debería votarse.
Sr. Washkevitz.
Sí, ese fue el punto que solo iba a tratar de hacer. Pasamos con este presupuesto a nivel global tratando de estar en el medio de la calle con todos. Hay algunas personas que pueden pagarlo y estoy feliz por ellos, pero hay otras personas que no pueden. Nuestras empresas solo funcionan, en realidad, ahora mismo a aproximadamente el 60%. Así que no sabemos cuál va a ser el ingreso el año próximo. Odio disagreeir con usted, David, pero ese número que usted sacó es incorrecto. Saben, vamos a estar mirando tiempos difíciles por otro año o más incluso. Así que necesitamos hacer lo que podemos para los contribuyentes en este punto.
Gracias. Bueno, después de él, Mike, hay alguien atrás.
Chardoul Parmar, 72 Moore Road. Solo quiero agregar una cosa. Esto representa menos del 10% del reír de la tarde. Eso es lo que estamos adquiriendo, estamos adquiriendo aproximadamente el 8% de la taking from that fund. Así que pensar que vamos a agotar dinero el año siguiente o el año después es ludicrous. Así que solo quiero asegurarme de que todo el mundo entienda que en relación con lo que realmente estamos tomando es en realidad una cantidad muy pequeña de dinero. Así que gracias.
Gracias. ¿Hay alguien en el camino hacia atrás?
Michelle Morris Friedman, 45, Roosevelt Street. Este es un punto a procesar. Las personas en la parte de atrás no pueden escuchar. Hemos podido escuchar a la mayoría de las personas que han tomado el micrófono en el piso, pero realmente pediría que todos los asuntos y en la frente, por favor, hable tan lentamente, fuertemente y claramente como puedas porque he podido entender los comentarios, pero aún no he entendido lo que es la modificación. Y si pudieras, por favor, repetirla fuertemente, creo que eso sería útil. Gracias.
Bien, ¿tiene la modificación en su warrant? Michelle. ¿No tiene la modificación original en su warrant? Sí, bueno, es la tabla que necesita mirar. Correcto, no, lo entiendo. Es lo que quería que mirara el artículo porque ella no tiene la modificación. Quería que mirara la línea de estabilización de 530,000 dólares y la modificación lo está bajando a 375,000 dólares. ¿Bien? You good? All right, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say on this amended article?
Okay, thank you. I'll try to yell as much as I can. Just a couple of other points. Again, I don't think anybody's trying not to be empathetic, but the reality is, probably the best thing that can happen for folks is if anybody does get into a hardship situation, we have a tax collector in town who has done an amazing job year over year of working to help people get into payment plans. And if you're having trouble making your payment, you know, the amount of the bill is oftentimes less important than just the manner in which you can pay it off. And I know that Sue Golatsky is very much committed to continuing her good work if people are struggling as we get into next year. And I also just wanted to point out that the reality is, what we're looking at and the discussion that took place at Finance and Select Board, is there's an extremely high likelihood that next year our taxes are gonna go up significantly. And that, you know, we have to stay within the levy limit, but they're probably gonna need to max it out. And then there's also conversation about sewer rates going up. So I know it seems like a small, you know, percentage of the budget, but again, leaving that hundred-and-fifty-five in place in stabilization gives a little bit more breathing room next year. I mean, I just hate for people to have kind of the, you know, dopamine hit of, great, we only have a twelve-dollar tax rate, and then next year, people are gonna forget what happened today when their new tax bills come out and there's a shock. So it's just trying to smooth out the ride. The ride's gonna be bad no matter what.
Thank you. Mr. Phil? Be right with you.
David Phil, Thirty-Ninth Hackney Road. The previous speaker mentioned the sewer rate increases, and that is true. I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you you're not gonna pay another penny next year either. This is a one-time infusion of money from stabilization. So, but we're dealing with the facts we have now and the situation we have now. The DPW Director is going to ask for a fifteen percent increase in sewer bills for FYI twenty-two, I'm sorry, FYI, yeah, FYI twenty-two, and then another fifteen percent on top of that in FYI twenty-three. Granted, that needs to come in front of the Select Board and go through the whole process, but this idea that we can pay a little more here, pay a little more there, it all adds up eventually. And this year, if any, is the time to give taxpayers a break.
Thank you. Mr. Devine?
Jerry Devine, One-O-Six West Street, Hadley. In taking the five-hundred thousand out of the stabilization this year, does it affect our bond rating at all?
Mr. Nixon will answer that for you.
We just recently had our bond rating reaffirmed twice, S&amp;P Global at triple-A status, which is the highest possible bond rating. Our financial advisors tell us that they understand that we can't do the things that most towns can't do, the things that they need to do in order to maintain good credit rating, that is fully funded, funding their OPEB contribution, and not spending from stabilization. Everybody recognizes that towns have to do those two things. They have to not keep track of OPEB and take from stabilization. The bond rating agencies are okay with that so long as you have a plan for future returns to those good management practices. We've articulated that plan in a couple of written documents, so we know what we need to do in order to get back on track.
Thank you. Joyce Chunglo?
Hello? So...
Who are you? Where are you from?
Oh, Joyce Chunglo, One-Eighty-One May Road. I think what people are missing here is that the three-seventy-five is going to go back into stabilization at the end of June. And the hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, that is the offset that makes the five-thirty. We're gonna try and see where we can get money to put that money back into stabilization again. So everything is like on a whim. So if you take the five-thirty, you get a twelve-dollar tax rate. If you get the, if you take the three-seventy-five, you get a twelve-fifteen tax rate. So there's your difference between the two. It's not that much of a difference. It's fifty-two dollars this year, but next year, there's not a guarantee that it won't go up to three hundred dollars on your, uh, extra in your tax bill. So those are the things that you're going to have to vote on and think about when you do this amendment right now.
Thank you. Mr. Maximovsky?
Jim Maximovsky, Twelve North Water Drive. I move the question.
Okay, motion to move the question, second?
Third.
Pardon? Okay. Takes two-thirds to pass this motion. So a motion and a second to move the question. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. The last number I had was, we were at one-thirty. I've got eight against, so that's one-twenty-two, four. Motion passes to move the question. All right, so now we're going to vote on the amended articles. So this requires majority, correct? Okay. So all those in favor of the amended articles signify by raising your cards. I can't hear what you said. Somebody has a question, I cannot hear it. Hang on, put your cards down for a minute. Somebody had a, it sounded like a point-of-order kind of thing. Say that again?
Shell Harrow, Sixteen Barstow Lane. What I heard you call for was to vote on the amended motion, and yet we haven't voted on the amendment itself. Don't we need to do that first? Yeah, but the question, the calling, Jerry, is whether we vote on the amendment, no?
No, we're voting on the amended motion. I'm sorry, Shell, you're correct. So we're voting on the amended motion. So all those in favor? Motion? Okay, we're voting on the motion to amend. I'm saying it incorrectly. Sorry. Okay, do we, are we all on the same page? Okay, so we're voting to amend Article Two. The line of stabilization from five-hundred-thirty thousand dollars to three-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. Everything else stays the same. Oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry. Where's that? Oh, right. Okay, so raise and appropriate changes also. Do we need, you want me to read this whole thing?
No.
Yes.
We're voting on the amendment, not the motion. That's correct. We're voting on voting for amendment.
Right.
All right. And then we'll, then vote on the motion after that. Do you hear that?
Right, we're voting on the amendment right now. Okay. All right? So all those in favor of the amendment signify by raising your cards. All those opposed to the amendment? Okay, that requires a majority. The majority rules, the amendment fails. Okay, now we get back to the original motion. The original article? Okay, Article Two, the original article. So what do people want me to, are we, are we good understanding what that is, or do I need to explain something? We're good? Okay, so we're gonna vote on Article Two. Yeah, this requires two-thirds. So if you're, all those in favor signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Okay, that's one-twenty-two in favor, eight against. Okay, moving on to Article Six. Select Board recommends this five-zero-zero. Finance Committee recommends five-zero-zero. Move that the town reduce the rate of interest that accrues on property taxes deferred by eligible seniors under General Law Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-One A, from eight percent to four percent, with such reduced rate to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July one, twenty-twenty-one. Do I have a motion? And a second? Motion and a second. Joyce Chunglo and Dan Zidonic will explain and answer any questions on this one.
The assessor introduced this article to provide relief for income-qualifying seniors who have opted to defer their residential taxes. Interest on any deferred amounts owed to the town occurs at eight percent. The town may choose to drop that interest rate, and the assessor has recommended four percent or five percent. And we're doing four percent.
Anybody have any questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Article Seven is capital expenditures. There are six sub-motions in this article. They are, Select Board recommends four-one-zero. Finance Committee recommends five-zero-zero. Capital Planning Committee recommends three-zero-zero. All these different... All these different motions require a two-thirds majority. So I'm gonna read the first one. Motion seven-point-one, move that the town transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from water reserves for Callahan Well Number One reconditioning for the Department of Public Works, and eighteen thousand dollars from Hadley Media Reserves for equipment for Hadley Media. Do I have a motion? That one's a majority? Okay, that one's a majority. Okay. Do I have a motion? A second? Okay, I got a motion and a second. Mr. Stanley's gonna explain what we're doing here.
Okay, so I'm sure these will be controversial over where the funding sources for all these things are coming from. So for the first article here, these two items, the Callahan Well Number One is scheduled for reconditioning to keep it in good working order, and then Callahan Well Number Two will be reconditioned the following year. These are annual things we take out of the capital budget that come from the Enterprise Fund Reserve Account in order to pay for these well reconstructions. The second one, the eighteen thousand dollars from Hadley Media Reserves for equipment for Hadley Media, that is money for equipment that comes out of the reserve fund for Hadley Media, so that's an enterprise fund. So both of these accounts are taken from, for the case of water, from our water rates, the water payments we make, and for Hadley Media, that comes from Charter, who, you know, pays a fund in order to have the cable service here in Hadley.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Motion seven-point-two, move that the town appropriate sixty-three thousand dollars to pay costs of purchasing and equipping a cruiser for the police department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? And second? Thank you. Mr. Stanley?
All right, if for any reason you can't hear me in the back, somebody just give me a wave, and I'll, I'll try to be louder. This motion seven-point-two is for the purchase of a police department cruiser. This is a hybrid cruiser, and something that, as part of the capital plan, we've been trying to keep regular purchasing of the cruiser fleet so that they're in good working order and can be retired appropriately. This is something that the Capital Planning Committee kept with this year. Next year, an item like this would be more out in the open as far as whether we would do it or not. This year, we felt fiscally okay to be able to purchase this cruiser, but next year, depending on the landscape financially of the town, we would be looking at this, you know, maybe not be requesting this purchase, but for this year, we decided to keep on the regularly scheduled purchase of police cruisers. And if you have any questions about it specifically, the police chief is here as well to answer
Mr. Matusko?
Edwin Matusko, One-Sixteen Stockbridge Street. Two or three years ago, didn't we have a whole bunch of overrides where we purchased a bunch of police cruiser that we used long-term money to buy a short-term product? And how come, so where does this fall in respect to those overrides that we had a couple or three years ago? Thank you.
We didn't have any overrides. We had a debt exclusion ballot on some purchases a few years ago, but we haven't had any overrides. There was a number of years ago, I think, we purchased more than one police cruiser in a year, but we've been doing this regular purchasing of police cruisers within the levee so that we don't run into a position where we need more than one cruiser in a year and we'd have to go to a debt exclusion.
Excuse me, Adam Scuasco, One-Sixteen Stockbridge, again. The way that I read it, when I voted on the overrides that we had a couple of years ago, it was for a nine- or ten-year note that we went and borrowed money to buy a car. And it was for the police department. Now, maybe I misunderstood it. I'm not gonna say that I didn't, but it seems to me that what that, what we did is we used long-term money to buy a short-term product. And I don't know how, everybody's been talking about a twelve-dollar tax rate. If you factor in all the overrides, what is our tax rate actually at this point? If you factor in all the overrides, what is our tax rate actually at this point?
I, I don't totally understand the question. I don't know if anybody else has an answer.
These things are within the levy right now. These are not debt exclusions, uh, to borrow. So these are within the levy. I, I myself, um, I vote for any of these. Another one of the citizens came up. It's 260-some-odd thousand dollars worth of capital projects that I don't feel we need right now at this point. Uh, I think we could hold off till annual meeting on most of this stuff. But, uh, two years ago, I think we did the debt exclusions because they were behind so many police cruisers that they had, they had wanted to catch up because the new cruisers that were coming out weren't the same as the old cruisers. They needed to adjust all the bars and, uh, lights and all the inside fixtures, radios and things like that. So that's where the price went up and where, where two years ago we went and spent a little extra money to catch up on the police cruisers.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Paramar.
Chair Joel Paramar, 72 R Road. Uh, my only question is, how will this affect buying of other equipment such as, that the police force might need in the future? In terms of spending this money now on the cruiser or saving it for next year and spending it on maybe more critical equipment that might be required in the future or, or how, based on budget cuts that might or might not happen? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Okay. Police Chief would like to speak?
I just wanted to answer that question really quickly. Mike Mason, Chief of Police. Um, I don't recall as far as the, uh, the, the debt exclusion question. I, we did buy a cou, two police cruisers, I think, four or five years ago. That was the last time we bought two in the same year. Every year after that, it's been a single purchase because we did, we were able to catch up. Uh, every year from, to my knowledge, it's only come from capital expenditures and it's only been, uh, it's within, borrowed within the levy. So it's never affected, uh, taxes. As far as other purchases, um, when Christian was the chair of the Select Board, he instituted a 10-year capital plan for all department heads. That's something that we've stayed up, stayed on top of. So there are no, uh, other more important items in next year than a police cruiser. That's just something that we always have to stay on top of. Once we start to fall behind in that area, the maintenance costs go through the roof and we end up spending more money fixing cars than we do, than really what they're worth. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, somebody in the back?
Johnny Michakowski, 269 Bay Road. Question I have, uh, the police details that we do, seems to do a lot of them. Do we get money for the cruisers in that? And do they go to a specific fund for cruisers for upkeep and new purchases?
So one of the, one of the things that I actually did bring along with me is, is actually exactly what you asked. We charge two different fees for police vehicles, uh, as it relates to cruisers. We charge an administrative fee, which essentially is a 10% billing on top of whatever the detail costs and, and in any detail that requires a cruiser, as opposed to just an officer standing out there, we charge $20 an hour to the contractor who requires those services. Uh, we actually just recently requested the numbers, so I had them here today for FY '20. Um, just with those two, uh, charges, we've, uh, been able to, the money goes into the general fund though. It doesn't go into capital. That's the only difference. But it's almost $37,000 just for FY '20. That is actually the cost of what the car itself costs. Obviously, as John mentioned, there's the cruiser camera, the strobe lights, the radios, radars and all that, and the hybrid that makes the cost go up. But this gets put into the general fund annually with those fees that we charge and essentially pays for the car itself. So the answer is yes. It doesn't go into the capital fund though. I, I can't answer the specifics on that, but I do know it goes back to the town.
Thank you, Chief.
Just a quick question, uh, we're talking about hybrid cars. How much more are we paying for this hybrid car? And, zero? $3,000. Uh, I guess that's the question. I mean, everybody wants to do this, but can be afforded right now. Do we get a regular cruiser that can be regularly maintained easier with our mechanics that we have in town? Or do we start spending a lot of extra money that may or may not have any on return?
Is there somebody outside? Cheryl, is that you?
As a follow-up question, Ms. Cheryl, 16th Park Road. Follow-up questions will ask either, how much are we saving on fuel costs with the hybrid versus the previous?
So we only have our first hybrid right now. I think, uh, Sergeant Ramon is actually driving it around right now. Uh, the, the early numbers, just from like the sticker price, are telling us that fuel save is going to be exponential. We are going to get that $3,000 back and then some. There's no question about it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Uh, motion passes 126 to four. Motion 7.3. Move that the town appropriate $21,250 to pay costs of purchasing ballistic vests for the police department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? And a second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley?
Okay. Uh, this, this motion 7.3 is for the police department's five-year scheduled replacement of its ballistic vests. Uh, this is something, I'm looking around here, they're wearing them as we speak, something that needs to get replaced on a five-year schedule and, uh, is something we're just committed to paying for. If this would come, funding for this is within the levy. So this does not affect the tax rate. It's already built into that, that, that number we presented in Article Two.
Thank you. Any questions on this article? Motion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes 129 to one. Motion 7.4. Move that the town appropriate $64,575 to pay costs of purchasing and equipping a vehicle for the fire department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? And a second? Mr. Stanley, please.
Okay, again, this, this article seven, or motion 7.4 is for borrowing within the levy. So it's already built into the budget, um, to purchase the fire department's deputy chief's administrative vehicle. Currently, that vehicle is in need of repairs. I kind of feel like we're in this garage, like we should have it pull through here so you could see what the current one looks like. But, um, it's an old car that is in, in need of replacement and repairs. Uh, this is a planned replacement, again, um, and something on the capital committee we felt was needed for the fire department. I don't know if you have any questions about it. I don't know the, the details of this particular vehicle. Um, but it is a replacement for that administrative purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Any questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes 126 to four. Motion 7.5. Move that the town appropriate $35,000 to pay costs of purchasing extraction, extrication equipment and airbags for the fire department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Mr. Stanley, please.
Motion 7.5 here. Just to repeat myself, this is, again, borrowed within the levy, so within our, our, our expenses that we've already planned. Um, and this is for the fire department's accident scene extrication equipment and airbags that are nearing the end of their useful life. Again, this is a planned replacement of this emergency first response equipment, um, and something that has been, has been in the capital plan for a while. So this is something we just saw was a real need for the town to have working, first responding equipment like this, this year.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes 127 to three. Okay, last motion on this article. Move that the town appropriate $40,000 to pay costs of purchasing and equipping a mower for the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have a motion? Second? Motion and a second. Mr. Stanley, please.
Okay, motion 7.6 is for a mower. Uh, this mower is a replacement mower that would be used for the West Street Common and Town Parks. Um, again, this item, the borrowing, is within the levy. So it's already built into the budget. And I ask myself with this motion, you know, a mower, do we really need it for the Town Common? For Zaturka Park, all these things? However, I look at it, that the DPW hasn't asked for anything in capital on this whole... this whole, the capital plan at all. Um, so there have been no dump trucks, no excavation equipment, no plows, no tractors, no nothing. This is their number one thing they felt they needed this year to pay for, to have for the town. And if you look at the town right now, there's a lot of people in the common and in the parks and all these areas. And so it is something to keep the town pretty, keep the town looking good at this time, um, to have a mower to keep all these things up. So, um, that's just my sa, little sales pitch on this mower because it is the one thing, uh, DPW is asking for and the most critical piece. They're not asking for anything else, um, here for the capital plan. And so I see this as a need for them. I don't know if there are any other questions.
Thank you. Anybody have questions on this one?
Cheryl Prudus, 27 Meadow Street.
Can you speak louder, please?
I just had a question. What happened to the $30,000 mower we approved last year?
Okay, the question is, what happened to the $30,000 mower we passed last year? But I think that was at the annual meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that got approved. Um, I think that was turned down in debt exclusion, I believe.
That is correct. Mr. Phil?
David Phil, 39 90 Road. And I, I know I'm gonna hear about this because DPW is my department, but, um...
Hang on, I think we made too much feedback.
Try again.
Test, test. All right. David Phil, 39 90 Road. And I know I'm gonna hear about this because there's DPW guys here and it's my department. But I think there's better use of, uh, town funds this year than buying another mower and what we have is serviceable.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments on this? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Is there anybody that can't see me out there that's voting no? Because I can't see between these two little walls between the doors. Keep them up because I gotta count them. I got 31 against, 99 for. What's that? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. We got 42 in favor, 71 against. 42 in favor, 31 against. It's two-thirds. Two-thirds. So motion fails. Thank you. Yes?
Point of order, please. Michelle Morris, 30, 45 Roosevelt Street. I think you should have also been clear to the people who were supporting the motion that they should... that they should also move to where you could see them. It's possible you didn't count anybody and I would prefer to have counters in this kind of a situation, thank you.
No, I, I, I got everybody that I could see out back. I asked them to move if they couldn't see me, so... All right? Moving on? Okay, we are, uh, we question on whether we have a quorum or not. So now we got to count everybody that's still here. So bear with me a moment. Take a section, you guys. I'll get up front here. Okay, so I got 9 of 1, we got 41 in the bag. Oh, I got you. Why don't you pronounce yourself? That's good because that means we have 41 and 49. Plus him makes 90. We need more than 10 more people. Do it one more time for me, please, because this is, take or break. Okay, we have 90 people here. Quorum is 100. The quorum was called, so we do not have a quorum. The meeting has to end. Hang on a second, all right, we got quest- we got, we'll deal with that in a minute. I want to, questions outside?
Michelle Morris Freeman, 45 Roosevelt Street. I read through the state, um, guidelines around COVID and I believe we are allowed to have a reduced quorum because of COVID. I believe 50% of the regular, my husband says 60, people would make a quorum under COVID.
Okay, well, that is somewhat true, but it is not, there's a certain process that has to happen and it involves the select board posting a notice, et cetera, et cetera. We do not qualify for that on meeting day. Okay, we can't, we can't do anything. Okay, yeah. All right, we're going to have to talk about this to see what we're going to do. So give us five minutes, we'll be right back, thank you. We got to decide how the meeting is going to end today. Okay, everybody, can I have your attention, please? Since the point of no quorum was brought up and we don't have a quorum, we can conduct no further business today. So I would like to, I will accept a motion to dissolve. The, uh, the articles that are left are going to be taken up at the Springtown meeting, unless somebody decides that they need a special meeting for it. But everybody's decided that, that it's time to call this one done. So I would, I'll accept the motion to dissolve, please. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you all very much for coming out, I appreciate it. Thanks to Hadley Media for setting this up, cheering it down. All the police and fire people who ever set up this venue, again, thank you very much.